Good evening to everyone, and if we all could please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag, followed by a moment of silence.
Over here.
Thanks, Don.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any citizens here this evening that wish to address the board? Any citizens that speak to the board this evening? Okay, our first item is scholarship demonstration by Mr. Donald Orlando, the principal of Erie High School, Gary Margorion, assistant principal of Erie High School. Gentlemen.
Good evening, everybody. I apologize, I'm a little bit under the weather.
You shouldn't have to stand in that bright light if you're sorry.
We'll have to grab the machine up, but Ms. Shields, can you grab that machine up for us? This is Leela Shields, she's one of our counselors, and I asked her to come down and kind of help out a little bit, just in case I can't make it through. It's not going to go voice, but I'll do my best to get through this.
Listen, it's going to get you out of the interrogation room.
There you go. Perfect. So, this is the machines that you've heard so much about. What Ms. Shields is passing out right now is some of the items that come directly from our district, things from our pillars, our aspirational goals, our game-changing targets. We wanted to pass this out to you and highlight the areas that we feel scholarship connects with. Just so you understand that this program isn't something we just pulled out of thin air and thought, hey, let's try this and do it. We wanted to make sure that it was within the mission of the school district. As you prove that, we'd be happy to go through any of the highlighted areas, and while you're doing that, I'm going to give you a little bit behind what we think this, what this program could do for us. So we have obviously a major truancy problem going on at Erie High School, as well as safety. I'll start with the truancy side of it. Oftentimes when I go to court, which is probably going to be over 200 times this year, I have to explain to the judge what's going on with the student's attendance, and I find myself oftentimes saying they only have three or four absences, but they have 1,500 minutes, meaning they were late all these minutes. So the student is actually coming to school, but they're coming to school late, and we have an issue with that because by law you can't discipline truancy. You discipline it by going to the court system. So it's a very hard thing to take care of in-house. I can't just say, you're truant, here's a detention, or here's a suspension. This system right here, when you scan in, will send a text message to parents or guardians at the time that the student arrives. So right there, we've already got quite a bit of good feedback from parents on that. We've reached out to the news, we've put it on our Facebook, and have done a one-call weekly for parents to update their information, and we're constantly getting calls to do that. So we set up the secretaries with the means to do that, and we've been able to update some parent information, so we feel we can at least reach more parents than before. I just had them turn on another feature, which initially wasn't on, that if by 10:00 the student doesn't check into the school, they get a text message to say they're not at school. So you kind of get it either way, the time they arrived, or if they're not there at all. We're hoping by the parents getting those text messages, they'll figure out what's going on with their kid if they don't know. Couldn't tell you how many times I've called parents up to say, hey, you know, your son's not been here for three days, and they just, they have no idea. They have no idea. So this is definitely going to help out with that. The other side is the school safety aspect. Everybody needs to be identified. My wife works at LECOM, and she cannot get in without a badge. They actually take her to security, she has to prove who she is and wear a badge even though she's an employee, and every student there does the exact same thing. We have over 150 doors at Erie High School, 550,000 square feet, I think I was told. It's just a massive, massive school. So if somebody wants to get in, and there's a student willing to pop open one of those entrances, they're going to get into school. So now when we walk down the hall, every student is going to be wearing their badge. Ms. Shields is going to get out some of these badges, and I will as well, to show you what they look like. I'll pass them down for you.
Is that the same badge as we're giving? Is that a separate matter? Do we have the ID badges we're in purpose to give in for ourselves to understand?
These are definitely... Yeah, you would get a badge that would look like the one I'm wearing right here. Those badges will only sync up to this system right here. That's it.
Then maybe you want to include us if we ever have to go to Erie High?
You can get into Erie High with your regular badge. Yeah, when, we are doing a soft launch on this system tomorrow. We've set up stanchions at each of the doors, and the students will be funneled into these systems, and they'll tap in very quick. We're going to show you what the tap-in process looks like in a second. We're doing a soft launch because you don't really want to go that big. We've got a lot of students, so if we turned on all the features such as the parent text messages right out of the gates, you know, a big launch is probably going to result in big problems. So if we start a little bit smaller, with just a simple tap-in, and then we could check how scholarship integrates with our existing Infinite Campus, make sure there's no mistakes. After two weeks, we plan on turning all the features in, on for the parents. All right. So this system itself is really, really simple. Let me grab a card that's kind of hanging around. I thought I had some more tied on here, but I gave mine. Okay. So this card here is actually a fake card. It's one that Scholarship sent me just for the purpose of showing what happens if somebody presents something that's fake, or if they try to pull something like getting an extra card to give out to one of their buddies or something. Scholarship will recognize that and actually set this alert off. So the administrator watching the machine, I'll do that again so you can see it over here. So the administrator, oops, it won't even work now. There we go. You can see that on the other screen. If this was a real student's card, let's say they bought a new one and replaced it, the old one becomes invalid, their face will pop up on the other side of the screen. That same alert would happen if the student's out of their assigned area. So if we decided to use this down in the lunchroom, which Scholarship knows where our students are every period, so we actually could take these down to lunch to avoid kids skipping during that block, swipe in if they're not supposed to be there, it would make that alert as well. If the kid's supposed to be there, the swiping process is very, very fast. That's it. And that student's checked in. He was just checked in, but this system itself can do 90 check-ins a minute, so if we lined up everybody at Erie High at all four kiosks at the exact same time, we can get them checked in in about five minutes. Now, that doesn't happen that way. We have kids that come in early for breakfast, so we have some that come in on a late bus, and others that are late to school. So it's going to be actually a quicker process when we open the front doors than that for those students that are at those specific doors. If you're looking on the front of the kiosk... There we go. If a student is, forgets their card, we can open up the student PIN pad for them to punch their number in. Takes a couple more seconds for them to punch it in, but it's the exact same process. The way I know if a student lost their card is after a couple consecutive punch-ins, it'll send me an alert on my Scholarship account of lost cards. You know, say, you know, these students right here have punched in three days in a row, they must have lost their card. So then I can reach out to them and say, hey, you got to find your card, or else you're going to have to pay $5 to replace your card. The cards have a chip inside, so that's why we give them the holders that you see. They can't put any holes in it, or else the card will be null and void. Do you have any questions that I can answer? Yeah?
Are your parents fully engaged? I mean, it would seem you'd need every parent to have given you a contact number to text them, and they all have them, and have you cooperated happily?
Yeah. Our contact information isn't the best district-wide, that's not really a major secret. So we went on a huge campaign, we've been on it for months, to try to update this information. We sent a one call out Sunday at 6:30, I think.
Every Sunday at 6:30, we send a one call to all the families, yeah?
Yeah.
To ask for that information, and then in our five monthly newsletter, we also send it right to the houses asking for updated information.
So your parents aren't covering for a truant kid, they're happy to find out if he's not there?
Yeah, they're very excited. I've gone just from talking to the attendance department, the number-one response you hear when you call is, I thought they go to school. They leave the house at 7:30, I drop them off at 8:00. I don't know why they're not there, so that's very often the response we get from families.
And I see that a lot in the citation hearings. I mean, you have parents that come in with, and they're being very genuine. I mean, they're doing exactly what they say they're doing, and their student could be walking in the building, and maybe out one of those 150 doors. We don't know. But now at least we'll have a record of every single person that stepped foot in that building. So I would hope that it gives parents a sense of...
What if a kid does check in because they've lost their card?
Well, that becomes a behavior issue then. That turns into a class cut, and we would just follow our behavior continually.
How do you know that he's cut in, and when do you know?
The teachers still take their block attendance.
Oh, okay. So the teachers don't, they're not going to use it?
No, not right now. That is something you can do in the future, but right now...
Does the monitor have to, the person monitoring it has to make the decision if it's the person who has the card? I mean, the machine doesn't match up the picture, right?
That's a great question. So I'll show you, I'll show you the side that we would see on the back, and I'm going to take that same card and hit it again. Comes right there.
So it's up to the person monitoring it to determine if it's that person?
Yeah, that's correct. All these, all these machines as well have a serial number you see right up here. So if we did get a discrepancy, like, let's say, a student wants to cut, and they hand their buddy their card, and they say, hey, swipe me in when you get to school, I'm going to cut, and we find they're very late for their first class, maybe 30 minutes, I can go right into the system and find the machine that they swiped in on, and these machines are at set points in the building, so I can get that on camera within a minute and determine who swiped that kid in. It really won't take very long.
I think another great feature is how it prints out the tardy pass for us. Have you gone, I don't think you've gone over that yet.
No, I have not, so...
Were you? Okay. We'll sit here, thank you.
No, that's okay. That's okay. For the late doors, kids that come in late, it's a very difficult process to run them through quickly. Two Fridays ago on my report, we had 238 kids show up tardy to school. So imagine that, and most of those tardies are only about 10 to 15 minutes late, so you get this just massive amount of students that just pile into this one set at the same time. We do have six people at that time signing kids in, but still, I mean, there's a line for 10, 15 minutes. It's a major loss of instructional time. And then what the kids don't see is, the attendance secretaries have to take that list of 238 kids, go into our grading program, Infinite Campus, and input every single one of them manually. It's really a long process. Well, now this machine will default to late at 8:45, so when the student swipes in, the kid will just wait a second, and this is their pass to class. I'll go ahead and hand that around for you. It's that quick. Going back to your question, we added another attendance period, so we have four periods a day. We added an extra one that's called ATT, so there's 1, 2, 3, 4 ATT. Scholarship will set the time the student arrived at the ATT period. So if you go to your first-class teacher and you show up 10 minutes late, as soon as they go to your attendance, they will see ATT, that kid arrived to school at 8:38. There's no reason he should have been late for my class. I mean, it's right there in front of them.
And the hope of that too, saving the hours of the manual inputs and writing the paper is being more proactive interventions. And so our aides could be calling houses and calling kids down, and our counselors could be calling kids down to talk to them about their attendance, instead of us spending time writing out paper passes and putting things in manually into a system. So that's the hope we can do with the same time.
So this is going into Erie High. Will this go into collegiate as well?
No. Oh, I'm sorry. No.
Well, yeah, just today we're here just for Erie High.
We want to start it here, and this is also part of what we did last year with the building budgets, where we gave the buildings and their instructional leadership teams the, some more control over their budgets, and the focus with Tony and Erie High was really attendance and adding the additional guidance counselors and putting this system and building that focus on attendance at that building.
Then will the students be wearing these all day long?
Yes. What happens? They already started. They've kind of, and I've talked to a couple of parents, and they said even when they've taken them to doctor's appointments after school, they could see them purposely wearing it and wanting people to see them because it makes them feel like they're part of a community. And even the, I could hear students as, outside the cafeteria when they were giving passes out, or giving these out, I'm sorry, going, wow, this is kind of nice, because before anyone could have just walked in. And now they felt it was a good safety measure to take, so really, they're already starting to wear them.
So what happens if a student doesn't have one? Is there a discipline action because, hey, where's your badge?
There is, yeah. It starts at a morning, and we'll talk to them, and then it would go further than that if we needed to, but hopefully not. But yeah, there is a system for the teachers, it's part of our school-wide positive behavior support. It's under, it's not even a minor or major, it's like an other category that's a little even lower. We're, so yeah, we'll follow that sequence, and went through our school-wide positive behavior support team to come up with that, so.
Yeah, Ms. Shields and five other counselors, plus myself, we went to 102 classrooms in the last five days, and we actually wheeled all these machines in there. We handed all the cards out, we had the kids sign for their card to make sure that they got it, and everything you saw here, that's what we showed all the kids. And I've actually been very surprised, and I've been like high-fiving kids in the hallways because they're wearing their card just to wear it. And I told them, you don't need to wear it until March 5th, and they've been showing up with it since we've been in their classroom. So a lot of them are, you know, complying really without any issues.
Another feature that we're trying to give EMTA to work with us on is, we can accurately, you can see the E on here, the EMTA E, you can accurately put on the cards if a student qualifies for a bus pass. So you can put more value on the card so the student has it on them, keeps it. We're trying to make it so they can use it as their bus pass as well. So they seem pretty open to it as a meeting when we're with them, so I think that's going to move along like we would like it to.
In terms of replacing a bus pass, it's $20 for kids to replace a bus pass. It's $5 to replace a card.
I'm impressed that this was terminated within the building and that we brought it to implementation. I would assume we sent down you from administration, which would have been fine, but I mean, I'm impressed that it came from, as you described, your own creativity and problem solving. I'm impressed with it.
Thank you.
So a few questions that I have. If, we have two home students, so they are shared custody or whatever's going on, how are we, are they able to notify both parents? I guess if we have a student who maybe there's a conflict with a parent and it becomes unsafe for that parent to be notified when that kid's missing school, like, are we taking those kind of things into account?
That's a very good question. So as of right now, it's going to go to the primary phone contact, that's in our Infinite Campus system, that's how we set it up. If we had a custody issue, then that parent should be removed from Infinite Campus, and all their information should be removed as well. So the number and the contact shouldn't even be in IC. It should be replaced with, if we're getting a foster parent, we're moving in with grandma or grandpa.
Well, you can only send it to one person rather than two? I mean, there's a lot of children that would be in custody situations. You can't notify two parents?
That's something we can check.
Yeah, I want to check on that.
We can see if you're in that one.
Okay.
And then the second, the second one, and I had run this by Mr. Toledo already, but just kind of put that out there too, is, we're showing that we're using chosen names for kids.
As long as it's the name in IC, that will print on the card and it matches, yes, we can do that.
Tony, where are we with our contact information? What percentage of students do we have that we have their contact information?
Honestly, I couldn't give you a very accurate number on that. We're going to find out here real shortly. Yeah, we're expecting some families to not get it. We're expecting some phone calls that they don't have a child at our school, right? But that will help lead us to calling the kids down, to finding out those correct numbers, yeah.
And then, I'm not familiar whether they still have these phone plans or not, but do they still have limited text phone plans, and would that be a burden to any of our parents if they did?
It's another good question, but I don't, that's something I would not, yeah.
Well, I can assure you that our number's been blocked by some parents. So if we do have limited text, you know, they may just block us and solve it that way.
Okay. What about like emails? So then that way you can have like a track record?
If we could email, is that a feature? We could email?
Is that something that you have?
That's, well, I certainly can look into that. I would, I would think something that has this type of technology in there would be able to do that, so I'll check with Scholarship. We don't have emails from many parents, though.
Some are, some are, but not many, but...
But I think that's a great idea.
Well, yeah, I'm just thinking like if you, if you have that, then you have a track record, so if you, if it doesn't go through through the phone, then at least you could say, well, the email went through after email that you gave us, X, Y, and Z, you know, so that way it just kind of creates a solid line of accountability.
And emails tend to be more consistent, I guess, than some phone numbers. People tend to keep emails longer than they...
Very good question.
The other thing as we're sitting here, I guess, just making sure too, I would just encourage that the $5 fine, and I know that we have to make sure that kids are keeping track of them, but that some of these kids maybe who are going to the two homes, or have to be transaid for whatever reason, if an ID gets lost and it's not their own fault, just making sure that we don't, so many kids are getting too punished over that.
Keep it all.
Yeah, thank you.
I just, I think it's a great idea. All the favorites. I think the biggest challenge is, I just know the number of their employees at work, their phones get cut off all the time. They change phones more than we change T-shirts. So the challenge is going to be getting that number back. You just know, we try to call mom now, mom's, you know, sorry, that number's not, and there's no way to kind of combat that, but I think that's a good biggest challenge, actually getting that information to the person because they don't have a working number.
Absolutely, right.
How, now you did research on this, I would imagine, and how come we just couldn't use Infinite Campus? Because Infinite Campus calls parents, and so what was...
This is a more accurate system. You know, if you have a substitute teacher, and it's marked absent because a sub didn't change it over, then that, then Infinite Campus would trigger a call to every student that had that absent mark because of the substitute teacher that was in the building.
But you have people maintaining Infinite Campus if the kid comes late.
Not, if they're absent though, I think they wouldn't go in and be able to rectify that absence right away that day within that period, by the time that phone call would be triggered home. So on some days we have 26 subs, we're short 26 subs. We have more than 26 subs some days. So that would be hundreds of false calls that parents would get, that would be alarming to parents. So this is actually more accurate, because it is a system that has taken true count in the ATT tab based on their card, so this is an accurate communication to the parents. But the other one with the subs, that you're going to have a lot of false calls that go on.
Okay, the maintenance contract, is that included with the 36 thou you spent on this?
That's a first-year rate.
That's just for year one.
That included the equipment, the hardware, and the first-year maintenance, which is about $8,000 a year per current. So next year it'll only be $8,000 to keep the system running.
So you spent 36 to get the whole system, and then they're going to have to budget another $8,000 every year to maintain this?
Yes.
And there's going to be an additional cost on top of that. In that $36,000, there's a fifth kiosk that just looks like the front side of this, and it has a printer at the bottom so we could print cards in-house. Actually, Ms. Shields has printed probably hundreds of them by now. So we have to purchase blank cards, the toner for the printer, and paper for these passes. So in addition to the $8,000, we're probably looking anywhere between $3,000 to $4,000 additional a year for those supplies.
And then when we talk, they look at the ceiling, you give about $12,000, $6,000, yeah.
So you're going to, you're going to be maintaining it. You're not going to have to come to the board and ask us to maintain your machinery?
It'll be part of their building budget.
Okay, it'll be in there.
We gave them control of their budgets last year, and they were able with their money to make decisions, and as long as, one, it aligns to the strategic plan, and, two, it's within the budget, then we typically would approve those things.
Okay, and my other question is, now you have yourself, that's the head of attendance, and then you have two counselors, I understand, and you have three secretaries?
Three attendance aides, yes.
Three attendance aides, okay. So eventually you're not going to need that many people, am I correct? Because if this is as great as you say it is, then you should be...
Well, that goes without saying, this would take away the reactive approach to attendance, and let's be more proactive.
Yeah, in terms of the, in terms of the counselors, it's not going to make any difference in their job, because much of the work they do deals with the truancy issues, having the safe conferences and the citations, plus they do outreach. The attendance aides right now are so backed up that we're two weeks behind on reconciling the daily attendance. So this is actually going to take work off of the attendance aides, and hopefully they can then spend that time to contribute in the outreach and actually be able to reconcile us day by day.
So on top of paying all those people, we're going to also be spending eight grand a year for maintenance.
Yes. But it'll help us better utilize those people. And those individuals, again, you know, going back to the building budget, and Erie High is one of those buildings that according to our internal funding formula is underfunded at this point, so if they, you know, again, we're letting them make those decisions as long as it aligns with the strategic plan, and if a year from now they determine that they don't need an additional aide, then they would recommend that, but that would free up those dollars for them to use elsewhere in instructional programming.
Okay, yep.
I would also think this is cheaper than hiring enough aides to keep up with the paperwork.
One house?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols? You currently have an attendance rate of around 47%, I think, or at least it was last year, and I don't think it's improved. And you made an interesting point early on, which I was not aware of. You explained that truancy is not something you can control without going into court. You can't suspend students for coming into school.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to suspend them anyways, but we can't, we can't consequence for truancy.
We have another high school in the city that has 94% attendance, Collegiate. What's the difference between the two of them at the current time? You have a hard stop. Collegiate, you have to pass a test to attend. We've got excess capacity in the middle schools because of the reconfiguration. There's Room in East, Strong Vincent, Wilson. We do have control over academics. Why should we be putting children into high school who aren't ready for it? Wouldn't that make your job easier? Hard stop has been successful at Collegiate. Erie doesn't have one. It seemed to me that that would make it easier for Erie to succeed if we had a hard stop. You'd have to meet a certain academic goal, you know, perhaps through the state test before you went to high school.
Mr. Nichols, I just want to remind you that a couple meetings back, we did have that conversation, and two years ago we did tighten up the requirements for students to be promoted at the middle school level. We did not have any requirements before that. We put in a system where if they failed a certain number of courses, they had two options to make those up, either go to summer school, or go into our credit recovery program the following year. If they failed X amount of courses, then they would be immediately held back. So we're trying to address that through that program, really tightening it down and ensuring that before these students move forward, they at least have the basics in the core courses.
And one final question on this. Are the students often not showing up or leaving early because of work they've undertaken? They're working in a McDonald's or something?
To, you could apply for a work release program. To, you could apply for a work release program. That's in a different department than I'm in. So I couldn't really tell you how they grant that or what the criteria is to grant that. But typically, those would be seniors with enough credits that they don't need that last class of the day to graduate. Am I correct on that?
So, yeah, when they're senior, we kind of accommodate them with work release. However, the underclassmen, yeah, they'll just look right at me some days, to your point, and say, I gotta be to work, and they'll walk out to go to work. So, very few cases, but it does happen.
And the reason I mention that, as you would know, they used to have that twin tech setup up there where they had longer days and only three days a week, and if that might be something that would help with that.
You know, every year, we look at what can make us better. So definitely some we can look at.
I just, I mean, I just wanted to say I commend, I commend the whole team for the changes. I mean, I've spent not a ton of time, but more time up at Erie High this year. And there's definitely a different feel coming in, and you can see and just notice some of the change and the positivity going back into the school. And I can, would just like to, again, take the time to honor the amount of work that all the staff have put in. I know that this change has not been easy, and the amount of things that happen with our community and being underbudgeted and understaffed. You guys, I think, are really stretching your dollars to do the best you can to make a safe environment, to meet these kids where they are, to support them the best way that a school is limited and able to support them. And I know that the team is trying very hard to find new and creative ways. So thank you. Thank you. And this is not an easy job. You guys are doing, I think you're doing awesome down at it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for all your support.
What other things can this do, then, that you haven't had a program to do yet?
So what we also could do, we can create events within it. So for like prom this year,
Yeah, they can
We can have a list and make a kiosk in. If you're not supposed to be there, it would be that red buzz when you would go in. Depending on, like you said, the spread of the buildings or whatever, we could put it at the stadium for football games. Anyone who's a student scan in the stadiums that they're allowed to be there or not be there. It can actually expand to all classes where it could tie into every class period attendance, where when they go into English first block, scans. So they got to scan in, and they got to scan in the first block, second block, lunch, third block, fourth block. It can go throughout the entire school day. So there could even be messages on there.
Sports after, after-school programs, too?
After-school, yeah, yeah. Yep. And then also, we can put notes on there. Like if I need to see a student, I can put a note on that student's account. So when they scan in, that person at the kiosk can go, Mr. Lanning, I need to see you. Just go down and scan.
What happens at the end of the day? Do they check out?
You could. That is a feature in the system. We don't plan on running that as of now. The hope is just to get the AM entrance under control and running very smoothly. And then from there, expanding to lunch and anywhere else we think is appropriate.
Well, again, we salute you for your creativity and thank you for the demonstration and the information that's
I have one more question.
Sure.
And I don't mean to be a negative family, but we know technologies. What happens when it crashes?
Yeah, right. I've been thinking the same thing. We're gonna have to call Erica and put some communication out right away so people aren't getting really upset when they don't get that message, once they start getting used to it.
Yeah, the truth is, we have four of these kiosks. So there is a chance that one of them goes down, but we do have others that we can use. If this crashed, it would be more of a Wi-Fi issue. The Wi-Fi's not working in the school.
That's what I was suggesting.
Yeah. That, I mean, that would be
It does. And we always try to communicate everything three ways. That's something we always try to do. So, you know, hopefully, we can get a one call out through somewhere, because I get a one call, my phone app totally, through a Facebook message, through the school site. So hopefully, three ways very quickly.
Just wanna make sure we have that planned.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you very much. Are you able to grab the cars?
The next up is the Outdoor Classroom and Conservation Project at Joanna Connell, presented by Ms. Laurie Hogan.
Good evening, everybody. I know some of you. I don't know most of you. But my name is Laurie Hogan, and I was practically a lifelong educator for the city of Erie. I taught for 31 years at Connell, same building my entire career. I just recently retired, not because I still didn't love it, but for other issues that I had personally, financially, all kinds of other things. But the good news is, I have not left the district totally because I have, my heart is still at Connell, because when I walked in there, you know, 32 years ago, I fell in love with it, and I stayed forever and ever. My kids went there, and it is a magnificent place to be. But one of the greatest things about Connell is that it is the largest piece of real estate that, one of the largest pieces of real estate that this district owns. And through all the years of being there, we have discovered that it has some pretty priceless qualities to it. Most of the space that we have at Connell is green space, which is unique to every other building in this district. In fact, this summer, when we had Servery there, and Brian was there helping, he stood in the backyard and went, "Man, we got a lot of property here." And the comment was, "This could be like Asbury East." And I told him at that time, I said, "Hold on to that thought." Because over the years of being there, we would take our kids for walks at recess and things like that. And it's just so happened that about six or seven years ago, I noticed as we were walking by that the back portion of the property, there is a wetland there. And no one really knew that. However, at the time, it was more of a trash heap than anything, as well as the property across the street, which happens to be a city park that nobody knew we had. But anyway, so we took it upon ourselves initially just to clean it up because it was an eyesore for the neighborhood, it was an eyesore for the building, it was kind of a black mark, so to speak. And so we took it upon ourselves to clean up back there, and we did a very good job of that. And at one point in time, when we cleaned up, we had a four-ton dumpster, which, keep in mind, that holds 8,000 pounds of garbage that was three-quarters of the way filled. So we took out 6,000 pounds of garbage off of these two pieces of property. And we got letters from the neighborhood, "Thank you so much for cleaning it up." We got all kinds of wonderful comments. And from there, you know, I thought to myself, as a science educator who loves the outdoors, and knowing that our children are tied to technology more so than we need them to be, and spend too much time in front of things that they don't necessarily need to be in front of, I started taking my kids outside instead. And many of my science lessons occurred outside. And once we knew the wetland was there, we decided to go out there. We did water testing, and we did all kinds of different things. And so over the course of time, we decided to kind of develop it. And so we now have trails in the back around the wetland that none of you had to pay for. And we have a big gigantic pollinator garden that you didn't have to pay for. And we have a rain garden that nobody had to pay for. And we have done wonderful things with it. However, we would like to take it one step further, but you still don't have to pay for it. And that's what I'm here to talk about. So Connell Conservation, and I have a little who, what, where, why, and how that I can share with you. And I don't know if I have enough, but you might have to share. So basically, you know, I'm sure the first question in many of your minds is, okay, so who is gonna do this? And the answer to that is all kinds of people. Like I said, we've done a lot already that nobody really knew about, and we haven't had to pay for any of it. Because we've had grants that have been written specifically for us. We've had donations from people of both time and money. In fact, we had one little lady who saw a story about us in the newspaper, and she wanted to give us the money that she collected in her yogurt container. She was like this little, she's a retired person from Mercyhurst University. And she has given that to me twice. One time, it had $66 in it. One time, it had about $30. But one time, when I went to talk to her about it, she also wrote me a check for $500 because she thinks it's important. So we know that there are people out there that would help. We would love to investigate fundraising. We would love to continue the, you know, getting grants and things like that. As well as Servery has committed to bringing, continuing to bring mulch every year for the trails. But, and basically, what I'm here to do is to ask, since it's your property, permission to continue with the project. You know, the goal is to create a learning space where the kids can actually go outside and learn. Right now, we're on the docket for a possible boardwalk, again, that is through a grant that would allow people access to the actual wetland. They could catch frogs. They could birdwatch. They could do any number of things. And the thing is, anything that they do outside is tied to all of the curriculums that we have. CKLA, the new reading curriculum, a wide variety of the topics are science-based. And a lot of them are environmental science-based or agriculture-based. And we also have a 60 by 60 vegetable garden that is gigantic, that the kids love to go out to. So it's, you know, based in the curriculum, all of our science modules have some sort of environmental education component that you could do outside instead of in the classroom. It's great for kids that have trouble sitting in a classroom. You know, if you're anything like I was when I was in school, antsy, wiggly, whatever else. But you take these kids outside, and they just thrive, especially our emotional support kids, our learning support kids, and our LSS kids. They can work in a garden. They can do all kinds of things outside, and they do it well. And they're using their bodies, and they get excited, and it keeps them out of trouble, and they feel important because they're doing something good. So, you know, it's tied to the curriculum. It's tied to behaviors, and it makes the property look so much better. It's tied to the neighborhood. The PTA wanted this year to do, when we did the Trail of Treats, they wanted to do the pumpkin walk outside and do it through the trails in the back. The weather didn't accommodate to that. They didn't get enough pumpkins. But they pay money to do that up at the Erie County Conservation District and down at Waldemere. And we could do it in the backyard. They, we just received a flyer from LEAF, from Frontier, to have 5th graders go over to LEAF to do tree identification and pollinator things. We can walk out the back door and do that for nothing and don't have to pay for busing or anything like that. And the thing is, the location is perfect because within a five-mile radius, it's not only Connell, it's Wilson. They're a mile away. Jefferson, McKinley, Deal, Collegiate is not far. Lincoln is right there. It would be so easy for people to bring their kids there to have that opportunity. You know, it's an ongoing project, again, referring to LEAF and Frontier. It has taken them 25 years to get to the point where they are now. We started working on this maybe five, six years ago, and we have already made tremendous progress, and again, with no cost to anyone. But probably the most important part of it for myself is because, you know, our kids, when we were little, most of us in this room, we lived outside. And it was come in when the streetlights go out, and, you know, it's better for their health, especially their emotional health. But, you know, our kids are suffering from like nature deficit disorder. They don't know a tomato from a radish. You know, you can hold up a radish, and they go, "Is that a plum?" And, you know, you walk outside. I had kids out one day, and God was with us, from me to Rose, there was a fawn that had just been, she was still wet. And I had nine kids with me, and I said, "What is that?" I almost cried. I'm like, "What do you mean, what is that?" Like, "It's a fawn." "Well, what's a fawn?" "It's a baby deer." "Is it alive?" "Yes." And another time, we had, you know, we were, we were out, we saw four doe just having lunch grazing on. And they're like, "What are those?" I was like, "Oh, my God." But that being said, you know, all of our science curriculum that has anything to do with the outside world could be done outside. And the connections to careers is unbelievable. You have landscape design. You have architecture. You have all the environmental sciences. Water, conservation, any of those things, which I know is a big push for the district, could be done there. And we have supportive people that would help us do that. I do have a letter from Erie County Conservation District that I worked with them on multiple things, mostly education-wise, but some consulting and things like that. And they are absolutely, positively all-in if we continue to do this as far as any kind of educational support. They have people that would help with permits. They have, you know, they did a wildlife study recently. Just real quick, there are multiple species of birds back there that could be, you know, you can draw more of them there that should be in that type of environment. One thing that is huge is the wetland that we have, and it is miraculous, I don't know how it is, is one of the few in Erie County that is what they call fragmite-free. Fragmites are an terribly invasive species. We don't have them. And one guy from the Sierra Club that was walking with me back there said, "You have no idea how important this is." He's like, "This place needs to be protected. This place needs to be preserved because we have so many wetlands that are pretty much shot because they're invaded with fragmites. Ours isn't yet." So, you know, you have conservation, you have preservation, you have education, you have, you know, building that connection to their natural world, behavior issues that you could, you know, help with. It's really kind of a no-brainer from my perspective. I know that when I took my kids out there, and when other teachers take their kids out there, they're so unbelievably well-behaved. They are so grateful to be outside. And to be perfectly honest, they retain that information 10 times more than reading it in a book. They remember it, you know, they'll remember, "Isn't that a red-winged blackbird? Didn't you say that was a red-winged blackbird?" You know, all those different kinds of things. And then when they go to read about it, in reality, they can connect to it because they've been there. They know it. They understand it. We had a group of kids for a couple of years that did water testing, both in the wetland and the creek across the street. And they actually, on a spreadsheet, did a full report of the stream health, sent it to Erie County Conservation District, and they used it as part of their state ride report for stream health. Those are real-life skills. You can't get that sitting in a room reading a book. I'm sorry. You can't. Yes, sir?
I think if you have it, it's all sold. We like it.
I just need you to say, "Yes, you can keep going." I'm not asking you for money. I'm not, I'm not asking you for anything other than, "Yes, I can use this piece of property to do this." You know, there are so many people who, you know, when it comes to fundraising, I think that is gonna be so easy because I think people are tired of donating computers. The kids don't need anymore. They're tired of donating Legos. They, our kids need to reconnect with the environment because we are going to hell in a handbasket right now, as far as that goes. And it's important to kids. You know, they do wanna save the planet. We gotta teach them how. And, you know, you can't do that with a book.
Does this go down to timber divine? What do we have to do to set up an arrangement to allow this to continue?
I think all you have to do is say yes. I mean, I don't think it's official. I don't know if it's something official or not. You will not be responsible for maintenance. You will not
If I can just for one second.
Sure.
So in the past, many of the items that were discussed here today with the trails and with the work in the gardens and the wetlands, those were grants that were written by Environment Erie and issued by the Department of Environmental Protection in order to fund that. Those are items that came before this board where you had to approve receiving that grant and approve the project prior to that occurring. So that does come to this board for approval when there's grant funding and those projects occur. In the past, we've had the Academy Neighborhood come to the school board and ask approval to renovate
Bakersfield?
Thank you, Bakersfield. I couldn't think of the name. I believe they had gone in and done some landscaping and forged sidewalks in order to better utilize that part. At that time, the conversation At that time, the conversation at the board level was a concern that a, an affiliated, but still a third party was coming in and making recommendations of permanent changes for the property. And the board's discussion was, "We're all in, we're happy anybody wants to improve the property. However, when we get to that point of making permanent changes or, or physical changes to the property, that that's something that the board should consider as to whether that particular change meets the long, long-range goals of the district for that particular property." So, I'm not, I'm not offering that as an impediment in any way. I'm just suggesting that as a matter of discussion.
I'll come every time. I, I'll let you know every single thing.
If that was a necessary-
Right, absolutely. Absolutely.
I think what we have in place right now is we do have a plan from Dahlkepper's Landscaping.
We do. I'll bring it the next time.
And it was hanging in the vestibule of the school. And their design architect, Lacy, who's Lacy Lundie?
Lundie.
Has been, has been very active in the project. I have talked to Dan Dahlkepper about it, he wants Lacy to be the lead on that. We were told that that, the price of that observation deck could be around $120,000.
The observation deck and that? No, they can do that. The, the boardwalk to get there would be covered with probably a grant of maybe 10 to 12. Okay. If they include like a gazebo-type of thing or whatever, that would be probably an additional 20 and maybe 30. But there's already things in the work. There were grants that were done by Environment Erie that had our name on them. And Environment, Environment Erie has since disbanded. However, the county and Erie County Conservation District is now in charge of all of those. And it is in the process, they are with, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but they are reviewing those grants as we speak and trying to figure out, you know, how that's all going to work.
Mr. President.
Sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's all right.
But we do have a lot on the agenda tonight.
Yes, I'll be quiet.
Might I suggest that Ms. Hogan works with our solicitor to, to put together a resolution actually approving fundraising, approving fundraising for that plan, and we incorporate that into the resolution. Would that be enough to, enough of an umbrella to ensure that we can keep this work moving without coming to the board every single time?
And, Mr. President, I was unaware that there is a long-range plan for that particular property. If that's something that could be provided, the board could review. And if that's the direction that the board wants to go with that property, you could give that advance blessing to move forward with that plan if that's what you like.
Just, just the, the broader scope of it for the whole piece of property, like five, 10, 20 years down the road. But it would be little by little, you know, just a, a small evolution.
Just so you're in harmony-
Absolutely.
And it doesn't go in some direction and then we end up poor or linger. Okay. Ma'am, if you have any question or-
Mrs. Baker.
I would be happy to take you all on a tour. Get your boots on.
Putting this on the internet, if you want to go write it down before we-
Yes. But I would be happy, anytime, any day, bring your boots, we'll go for a walk. Because it, seriously, it's, 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 it's six acres of greatness. I mean, it is spectacular. And that's not even counting what's across the street, which is a whole nother ball of wax. But it's, it's magnificent. So, I appreciate the time, I appreciate you listening. It's, I get kind of passionate.
We appreciate you, we appreciate your love.
Well, because it's good for them. We need to start doing things that are good for them, like all, like the whole of them, not just their head.
Well, good things like what you're describing don't just happen accidentally.
No.
Don't let us, we do so, we do, and you can't-
Thank you, I appreciate it so much. Have a great night. Thanks, Lord.
Next up is Special Ed program review. Dr. Angie Konaki, Director of Public Services.
Mr. President, while she's preparing. Just to let you know that our constructive trades is currently selling tickets for a gazebo. When we talked about a gazebo, Ms. McCosky in the other room over there will have more information. They are grappling a gazebo and a, like a tool, a shed, a beautiful tool shed that they created and they made, so. If anyone's interested. Exactly, that's why I said it, because I feel like there could be some work together on that.
Now, Angie.
Okay, are you ready? Do we still have any left in them? You've been doing a lot of listening tonight. So, I thank you for the opportunity to present on special education tonight and the almost 10 years that I've been in this position. It's the first time I've ever presented to the board on the topic of special education. So, Mr. Spiegel, thank you for suggesting that. I hope that what I present to you tonight will help you as you engage with the public. There is my presentation in front of you, and also there are a couple of pamphlets that we typically pass out at community events, open houses, things like that. So hopefully, those will be helpful to you as a reference. This is actually kind of an older picture of one of our life skills programs when it was at Wilson. That teacher is Vanessa Bona, that's Tim Bona's wife. She left us for a period of time in Corey, which is where they live, but she actually missed us so much that she has since returned. But we now have Vanessa Bona back with us. She was a great teacher, she still is. So, our program objective, to offer a variety of program options and commitment of resources that allows quality accommodations, a continuum of supports, and highly effective adaptations to the general curriculum offerings, affording special-need students with every viable opportunity to meet proficiency and potential. That is a process. It's not always an easy process, it's not always a quick process, and it's usually not a cheap process. But it is our primary objective. This is our administrative staff, I won't read it to you, but you can see everyone on our administrative staff and what their responsibilities are. Our supervisors have responsibilities over programs at different schools and different programs. And I have responsibilities over programs as well. At one time, special education was in itself a department of its own, but now it's kind of a division, a bigger department of pupil services, which includes all these other programs. Our teaching and support staff include 168 special education teachers and speech therapists. That includes our early intervention staff as well. 10 school psychologists, 53 full-time paraeducators, and 21 long-term subs. I was practicing for my husband last night. He used to be a board member of the Water Authority. And he asked me this question, and I thought it would be something you'd be interested in knowing. What's the difference between a paraeducator and one of our long-term subs? Well, our paraeducators have to have, and this is by state mandate, they have to have at least an associate's degree or 48 college credit hours. They also have to get 20 hours a year of professional development. Or there's a course that the IU offers and a task that they can take. So, we're also mandated to provide our services in the least restricted environment. So, the majority of our students are provided services in the general education setting. When we do our walkthroughs weekly, these are the things that we look for because these are what we consider the hallmarks of successful inclusion. Exhaling best practices of standard-based education, emphasis on differentiated instruction and co-teaching. So that's what we're looking for when we do our walkthroughs. So that's how the majority of our students are serviced. Here's some of the accommodations and modifications that are provided to them via their IEPs. This is not an all-inclusive list, but some common things that are provided. Technology, small group, instruction, extended time, those types of things. This is some recent data on our LRE, our percentage of students who are educated in the, in the regular education environment. I thought it was important to include this for you because we've come a long way. This is important to the state, and at one time, many, many directors ago, we actually had the worst percentages in the state for LRE. And Pennsylvania had the second worst percentage, no, they had the, yeah, they had the second worst percentages in the whole country. And we had the worst percentages in the state of Pennsylvania. So, we've really come a long way. As of our last cyclical monitoring, which was two years ago, we're no longer incorrect about this. So, we're pretty proud of that. We want those first two columns there, or rows, to continue going up and those last two to continue going down. That means that our LRE is improving. There are some students, however, who it's not the least restricted environment to be educated in the regular education setting. So, some of our students are in specialized programs. But here's what we offer. We have learning support in all of our schools at different levels. We have emotional support at Connel Elementary, Lincoln Elementary, Perry Elementary, all of our middle schools, and at Erie High. And if you have questions as I'm going, please go free to stop me and ask my question. Okay, okay, you got it.
How do you make these decisions, Angie? How are you deciding that the, you know, emotional support is going to this school or back to all the school, the autism?
Oh, how do we make decisions about where the programs are? Well, I'm going to be perfectly honest with you. When we, you know, collapsed buildings, some of those decisions were made based on space. But from there, we've made decisions based on, we don't want standalone programs. So, we don't, you know, we'd like to put programs where there are programs so that they have each other for support.
Have we looked at the number of students that are in maybe, say, a certain neighborhood and have those programs closer to them, closer to their homes and where they live? Have we done any data that way?
We have done that data. We don't currently have programs in those schools. A lot of times it's got to do with available space. So, and again, you know, we try to make sure that we have programs so they can use each other for resources.
And are there, are there any restrictions on the state level as far as the size of the classrooms need to be or the design of the classrooms?
Yes, there are restrictions on size, and they, they monitor us on that. So, we have to submit a separate, a special education plan revision notice any time we change a classroom or we, you know, we move it somewhere or whatever, and they will come in and they will look at it to make sure that it meets all the specifications.
What about bathroom facilities? Because I know when you have certain groups of students, you need to have those spaces closer. Have we looked at that as well? Because I know about Jefferson because I've been over there.
Yeah.
It's tough.
Yeah, it is tough. I agree, it is tough, and it's not always ideal, but, you know, we do the best we can. And if a student needs a certain modification, you know, to make it work, then we, you know, we figure it out. I don't know if that sufficiently answers your question, but yeah. Guess so. We do look at those things. Some more programming. We have life skills support, and I have what the case load, the case load and the ratio of students to staff are there. We have life skills programs at McKinley, Connel, Strong Vincent, and Erie High. And we have autistic support, as you said, at Jefferson and at Harding. At Jefferson, we also have the Mercyhurst ABA program. You're familiar with that program? That's one program, one classroom that we contract with Mercyhurst University, and we partner with them to run it. And it's, the ABA program is applied behavior analysis. It's a program that's, you know, research-based, it's therapeutic, it works on identifying students' behaviors based on their function and then increasing student skill repertoire to try to address those behaviors. We also have the hearing support program at Golden Cleveland. Here are some of the related services that we offer. I know you have specifically asked about that, Mr. Spiegel. We offer some of these in contract with the IU. And the reason we do that is because if these students have low incidence disabilities, it's more cost-effective for us to partner with other school districts via the IU. That way, we share the costs. So, some of these supports are offered through the intermediate unit. There's some additional programs that we offer. We have an early intervention program. We service about 600 students a year through that program. Each is three to five. We offer in-home support. We also go into typical preschools and daycares. We have specialized settings. There's a preschool program for students who are deaf or hard of hearing that's at Edinburgh University. We have a couple of students there. We have some students in programs at the Barbara National Institute in specialized and inclusive preschools. We have a language classroom at Perry Elementary. And we have the pre-K sanctuary-based learning program that we offer in conjunction with Erie that's at Emerson Gridley. So, those are our EI programs. We also have gifted support, and that's offered partially in the buildings because we offer advancement there. If a student is really advanced in reading, they might participate in a grade level above there until they're reading or math, whatever they're advanced in. And then we also have an enrichment program at Cleveland that they can go to one day a week. I mentioned the Special Olympics because I thought it was important for you to know that you do support that program that the district, the administration supports, that you supported because we have teacher coaches, unlike the county. The city Special Olympics has teacher coaches. Our teachers are coaches, and it's really beneficial to our students because they can take them on community-based outings and practice. They go to the peak, they ski, they go bowling, they do those things. The district provides transportation for those types of things. And, you know, we also support their fundraising, the polar plunge. And I did mention here that there's a casino night this weekend, I think, March 7th, Perry Highway Host Company at Six Terees, anybody's interested. We also have a unified track team where we have regular and special education students who compete together, and they compete with other teams in the county. And we also have a teacher coach for that. So, that's how the district supports that. We do contract some services. Okay, so, Perseus House is one of our contractors. They provide the prison program because we are, because the prison is located within our attendance area, we're responsible for educating the, you know, the students that are eligible in those programs. So, we contract with Perseus House to provide that education.
What kind of numbers are they?
Well, that depends, John, because it's a voluntary program. They don't have to participate. So, it kind of fluctuates. But believe it or not, some of the kids that you may even have seen on the news have actually done well in that program and, you know, actually earned their diploma.
I just want to point out too, for all of these programs, there's a number of kids that are students within the city of Erie and a number that are county students. We're responsible for the education of those students, but we do bill the county students for the educational cost of their students.
What do we, what do we bill them?
We, if it, there's two different formulas for that. If it's a special education student, we can bill them the actual cost. If it's a regular education student, we can bill them one and a half times our tuition rate, which often is a challenge when we're working on the budget with Perseus House because they, they sometimes bring in a program that costs more than that. We have to work with them to bring it in line with what we're allowed to bill.
And what Brian just said is also true of the residential programming because that's typically students from outside of our attendance area that are, you know, placed by the courts in residential treatment. And we're still responsible, we're considered the LEA, the Local Education Agency, because they're residing in our attendance area. But as Brian said, those students who are, who not live in our attendance area, their parents don't live in our attendance area, you know, we can bill for those kids. And we also have home tutors. Those are for kids who maybe they are out of school because they had surgery or there was an injury or an illness. For, for some of our special education students, it's actually an IEP placement option if they're very medically fragile. We have some students who receive home tutoring. We've actually had some students who were able to participate partially, like by Skype. So, we try to do creative things to try to help kids participate as much as possible. Some of our other contractors include Sarah Reed. We do have, we do contract with them for the sanctuary-based learning program that's at Emerson Gridley, and that's pre-k to 12. We also are responsible for providing an education for students who are admitted to partial hospitalization programs. So, Sarah Reed has a partial hospitalization program, and the Barbara National Institute has an acute program. We don't place kids there. They're typically referred by community mental health providers or, you know, their doctors, whatever. But we are responsible for educating them when they're there. So, we do contract with Sarah Reed and we and I to provide those services. Some students are also in approved private school programs. And that was one of the programs that you had mentioned, Mr. Spiegel. So, we do have the Barbara National Institute, you know, that's very close to us. That's a five-day program for students with autism or intellectual disabilities, multiple disabilities. And we actually have now an emotional disturbance program for kids in grades K to 2. Those would be students who we, despite our best efforts and all of our resources, we're just not able to provide the level of support that they need. So, that's a 60/40 tuition split between the district and the state. We're approved private schools. Same with Western PA School for the Blind, except that that is a residential program. So, the students live there during the week, and they come home on the weekends. And that's how it works for the Western PA School for the Blind. We currently don't have any students there. We do have two students- We do have two students at the Western PA School for the Deaf and we have one student at Preston Ridge School for the Deaf, which is for students who have significant behavior issues that are also deaf or hearing impaired.
Where are those sites?
They're in the Pittsburgh area.
60-40 is what?
60-40.
So we have blind students that are in the schools here in Erie?
We do have visually impaired students. I don't know that we have anybody who's completely, totally blind, but we have students who are legally blind and, you know, we provide support for them. That's because we contract with the intermediate unit for, you know, for vision support. So there is a teacher who's trained in orientation and mobility who comes in and works with them. We have aids for them to support them, you know, as needed. We provide large print, braille, whatever it is they need. These are some of our demographics of the disabilities, by primary disability. Some of our students have more than one disability, but this is their, by primary disability, this is where the last couple of years, what our numbers look like. We've been pretty stable, except in a couple of areas, intellectual disability. We've gotten bigger, I'll go back to asterisks, that one, but our numbers have increased. There, other health impairment, our numbers have increased and also in autism. And the reason I thought it was important to mention that to you today is because we're probably, we're anticipating with the students that are coming up from early intervention, we're probably gonna have to go from like, maybe, maybe one or two more classrooms. So I just wanted to make you aware of that now.
Angie, can you talk a little bit to the board about what it means to be other health impaired from that diagnosis?
Yeah, that depends. So a lot of students maybe who have ADHD, who are just, you know, their, their disability is significant enough that they are against, not every student, that's funny. Tell me why that's funny.
It's just, it's foreign to me. I, it's just something new.
Okay.
Let's put it that way.
Okay.
That ADHD is now.
Well, it's not, not, not all students who have ADHD. Not all students, but some students if they, their disability is significant enough, can be identified as other health impaired. But as, you know, also, a lot of times when we have our younger kids and, you know, a lot of times the school psychologists don't feel comfortable yet to put like an emotional disturbance, you know, diagnosis on them. They want to kind of wait a couple of years and see what, you know, see if they get any kind of, you know, other diagnoses somewhere along the line. So some of those kids are also getting another health impaired diagnosis now. And maybe then when they're older, it might change to emotional disturbance, but.
So it can change?
It can change.
Okay. Because it used to be my understanding that once they have that diagnosis.
No, because they can be, every, every two or three years, depending on the disability. So two years if a child's intellectually disabled, three years for anything else, they're reevaluating.
Reevaluating.
So things can change. Yeah. And we've also gotten quite a few kids coming into the district that already had another health impaired designation. So that also accounts for some of the increases in our numbers. But if that trend continues, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to do something. We're gonna have to build up. I also wanted to talk to you a little bit about the, some of our programs, since, you know, career-to-work standards are so critical now, wanted to talk to you about a few of the programs that we have for our older students to try to help them to transition, you know, from school into, you know, career areas. And one of the things we have is the PACE Lab at the high school level. The PACE stands for the Practical Assessment of Employability Skills. And that provides assessment and training in different types of skills that students need on the job. It's more of like a pre-locational lab, provides students with career work exploration and transferable knowledge. It transforms the classroom into sort of a stimulated work environment, kind of like a lab where they can learn problem-solving and work-related skills. Some of these pictures are from our actual PACE Lab. A couple of them aren't, but some of, several of them are.
And much of that is new because of the fire?
Yeah, a lot of things had to be replaced because of the fire. True, yeah. Okay, and here's the areas that it covers. Consumer service, so that's a lot of like food service skills. Business and marketing, which they would do things like numerical sorting, calculating, collating, and money skills. Computer and technology, they practice data entry. Production, they do a lot of assembly work. And then construction industrial, they do some wood and metal working. We also have community-based instruction at all of our levels, especially for our kids with life skills and autistic support. We think it's important for them to get opportunities in the community to do things that kids their age would typically, would typically do so that they learn how to, you know, how to behave in a community setting. So they do things, they do different things. They do volunteer work, they go different places, they go to restaurants, they go to, sometimes they go to movies, sometimes they go bowling, they're skiing because they're practicing for Special Olympics. So they do all kinds of different things. But we also have, for some of our students in the high school, we have opportunities from different businesses that we partner with for the kids to get some kind of job-related experience. They do maybe some like janitorial work, they do that at the Sheraton, they do that at Representative Wersky's office, at the Goodwill, they sort fold and hang clothes. At the Soldiers and Dailers Home, they play games with the residents and do things of that sort. We also have a work-study program that's actually part of these children's educational programming as part of their IEP. So they work at some of these different agencies. We have our transition facilitator who works with these different, you know, these different businesses to try to help our students find these work-study positions and links them with OVR, Advanced Locational Rehabilitation, so that they have job coaches to assist them. And then a lot of these students are able to continue to work there even past graduation. And while they're doing this, they are able to earn elective credits because it's part of their program. And then next year, we're really excited about Project Search. And that is a program that we are partnering with several different agencies in the area and including AHN St. Vincent, the Office of Locational Rehabilitation, the Erie Office of Intellectual Disabilities and Mental Health. We're the education entity and then the job coaches are going to be provided by the Barbara National Institute. So these students will have a classroom at AHN St. Vincent. And they're going to learn skills outside of the typical things that kids with disabilities typically learn. We talked about janitorial things, we talked about, you know, food service, but they're gonna be learning other things, you know, like autoclave, you know, things like that. Maybe patient transport, whatever it is that, you know, they're able to, and they're able to do in that setting. So they'll go to school there, they'll learn job skills there. And the important thing is that eventually, the hope is that they'll be able to gain independent employment. And it's kind of like a braven funding system because all of these partners are contributing. We're gonna have 15 students who are gonna be involved in that next year. So we're really excited about that.
And these are life skills students or?
Yes.
Yes.
Life skills and autism.
What's braven funding?
That just means we're all contributing, you know, kind of in a braven way because we're providing the teacher. So that's our contribution. And the other partners are providing other things, whether it's funding or, you know, job coaches. HN is providing the site and some of the training. So that's our big thing for next year. Any more questions?
Yes, I was reviewing the third grade reading scores for the district. And I was surprised to see that, for example, the Rise Academy had a better result than three of our schools. But in looking at that, they would also break it down by different ethnic groups and such. And for one of, for one of our schools, it may have been Lincoln, I'm not sure, it actually had a, a special ed section. And to my surprise, it was higher, they had a higher score than one of the ethnic groups did.
Which is our.
Which I thought was impressive. Which I thought was impressive that they were doing it well. How do we do academically with, with our special ed students as compared to, say, Mill Creek or Fairview? Are we more competitive in special ed at this point or?
I think that it's, that's a difficult question to answer and it really depends. Because not, not all of our students who have special needs, not all of those disability categories that we were talking about involve child, children that have cognitive disabilities. You know, so some of our students, like some of those students that are emotionally disturbed, they're on par with their peers. And I was just at a meeting, actually just the other day, I was at a meeting at Lincoln for a student who is currently in one of the emotional support classrooms and we're working on pushing him out into the regular third grade because he can, you know, he can do the work academically, it's just that during a period of time, his behaviors were interfering with his learning. So we're working on those behaviors so that we can get him out into the regular, you know, ed setting because he's capable of doing that. So for our students who are capable of doing that, that, that's why our, our goal is to get them out, to provide them with the supports they need so that they can be successful.
But do you get the scores of, for example, the charters as to how their special ed students are doing relative to how your special ed students are doing? It, it does not show up on the state website. The state website will show the major divisions at each school.
Yeah, I'm gonna be honest with you. I, I focus on us.
Okay, okay.
Something that I had to ask for at the retreat was that we could disaggregate our scores because I wanted Sumner to see how many students, let's say, are learning support. And we could even break, I don't know if we can break it down, I Chana and Supporter, but.
I mean, if you can be asking.
I do now.
And then the demographics don't break it down by primary disability. And I will tell you right now that we do have a greater than state average for children with intellectual disabilities and also students with an emotional disturbance. So maybe we wouldn't expect that same type of performance that you're talking about from students with an intellectual disability, but students with an emotional disturbance who not necessarily also have cognitive impairments.
I was impressed to see that.
Glad to hear that. Sure, Rose.
Angie, I want to ask about the co-teaching. How much of it is really being done?
So it, that depends on the building. You know, we have pockets of excellence in certain buildings and then other ones, not so much. But that's why it's something that we're stressing when we do our weekly walkthroughs. Our academic team goes every week to different schools and that's one of the things that we're looking for because we want our administrators and our teachers to know that we think that it's important, you know, and we're offering them, you know, professional development so that they can try to, you know, improve that.
So some schools are doing it and some aren't?
I would say some schools are doing it better than others.
Can I, can I interject?
Sure.
With the new curriculum, CKLA, one of the biggest things we did was with EL and with special education, we made sure all the teachers had the core course information. And when we look at skills, they're looking at how to decode and how to learn how to read. When you look at the knowledge strand, which Ms. Hogan spoke about, the knowledge strand has to do with science and social studies. It's more where the students are there, they're listening, they're looking at photos. It's, it's more for all the students. That's the core piece. And all our students are getting that together. That's one of the key pieces to that.
Right.
But then they co-teach in different ways as well. They do some workshop model where they take kids in the back, another, the, the regular ed teachers doing that. And that is what we're working on to go, when we go, that's what we're looking for. Is this happening?
Well, I really appreciate the presentation. Thank you. And I think that there's a lot more people in, in our Erie community that, that benefit from our programs in Erie School District than people have any knowledge or certainly give credit for. I know that particularly for the people that are in the bubble, they can go either way. They could go down a life of being essentially unemployed and feel worthless about themselves or they could be employed and feel good about themselves. I know we've had a number of people that they work with that have been to the Erie School District and through some of these programs that are, are great and are happened, we're happy to have them. So I just thank you and all the people that you work with that really make a significant difference to a whole lot of lives and they get very little credit for it. We never hear about it. We hear about the, the cost of, the cost to educate a special education student, but you don't really get to see the benefits and the tangible results.
Thank you. We appreciate that. We have a lot of dedicated people that work for the district itself. I appreciate that. Your performance.
You know, this is near and dear to my heart. So Angie and I are the people that rolled out the whole inclusion model when we got slapped by the state and said, you're not doing it right. But in, and since that time, I've had a lot of concerns. I, I feel that our district needs more emphasis on differentiated instruction. I feel we need PD on differentiated instruction, we need PD on co-teaching. And I've, I've talked before about teacher teaching, teacher model, which would be good. So when you're saying we have some great co-teaching teams, we need to get those co-teaching teams working with other teams that maybe are already doing.
That's exactly what we're doing, yeah.
We have to do it. The other thing I'd like to see is how many of our learning support students, our, our special education students, leave us and go to charter schools? I'd love to break down those, those numbers. Since we pay a higher percentage or a higher tuition for losing our special ed students, I want to make sure that we're giving our special education students the best quality education we can so that they are not looking to, to leave us. And that's gonna be another way to help us in our financial plan.
I, I can say that the percentage of special ed students at charter schools is very similar to what ours is.
Okay.
That answers your question. It's not higher or lower.
Okay.
In the district.
Should we be tracking though, like, the special ed students that are leaving to find out if it was a, a delivery of service that is the reason that they left or for something else? I know we do those exit interviews, but when we do those exit interviews, we're talking at all about that delivery of service and whether or not it might be.
On that, that's a good.
Impact. When I was, Angie, great job. When I was doing this, I, all those things started to come to me. But I do know we need the PD. And I know we haven't had the money for the PD, but now.
Interestingly enough, the strategic plan, we have non-negotiables and three non-negotiables per instruction. Our learning targets, engagement of students, and differentiation. And that's why when Angie goes on Fridays, she's looking, she's targeting to see, how is the co-teaching model happening? What are we seeing? Are we seeing students engaged in work or is it teacher talk? Teacher talk, how much is student talk? How much are they working and, and working together?
Because I don't know how much they're getting in their teacher preparation, how much coursework they're actually getting on these skills. Yeah. So I feel like we don't want to set them up to fail. We want them to give our students the best experience possible. And the more training they have in that area, definitely the better. The gifted program, that's my other.
Oh, yeah.
I guess I would like us as a district to look to see if maybe we could provide that in a more appropriate setting. I, it's always, I've always found it a little different that we're taking, you know, seven, eight, nine, 10-year-olds and on a bus and going over to Collegiate Academy. And I think that they would be better served in their, I feel like that's more restrictive, even though it's only one day. And it does really interrupt, interrupt the day for them.
I mean, that's doable because, you know, the teacher can travel. She could travel to.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Because instead of having them there, why couldn't our, our gifted support teacher travel?
Yeah, to be honest with you, I mean, she does do that too. She travels, you know, she does like consult.
So she's not working five days a week at Collegiate, correct?
No, because she travels on some days to do consults with, you know, the regular ed teachers or, you know, special education.
I know when Barb Nozakowski was coming and pushing in my room, that was far more beneficial for my gifted students than when they, they left and went to, to Collegiate.
We used to be at Mercyhurst, actually.
Well, my daughter went to that program.
Yeah, so, and then they kind of gave us a boot and said we were at Collegiate. Because, you know, to be honest with you, I mean, you know, really, we don't get, we don't get money for, you know, from the state or federal government for gifted, you know, so it's on us. And so, you know, we do the best we can with the resources that we have. And I think at the time, we thought we had the most resources to offer at Collegiate and that was why.
What are our gifted support numbers?
How many are there?
Um, there, really, we don't have that many, to be honest with you. I want to say right now, we're probably under, under 100. There are probably more kids out there than, you know, what are, you know, what are identified right now.
And that includes high school as well.
Well, at the high school.
They really don't get much support.
Yeah, they don't. A lot of those kids are at Collegiate.
Collegiate right now.
And they're kind of getting support that way.
So are we under-identifying them?
Um, we might be. You know, that's a whole, that's a whole different conversation. You know, that's a whole different conversation about, you know, cultural issues and things like that and how, and the tools that are used to identify students. And that's kind of in general, that's not just to us. I mean, that's kind of a national issue that's being talked about right now, that, you know, different types of more culturally sensitive tools should probably, should be used to identify students that, that are gifted. Because there's a general feeling that kids are in general being under identified.
Yeah, I guess I would be very curious and following up with what Sumner had said. Just knowing the demographics of just like the breakdowns of the schools and then areas, I don't know if somebody else said that. I would be very curious to know, just that kind of breakdown of information and knowing. We might not be a minority majority yet as a district, but we're definitely edging close to those numbers, just which I think is an ox of war kind of statement anyway.
Wait, can you explain a little bit more to me what you mean?
Minority majority, meaning a majority of our students are minority students.
Oh, you mean the majority of special education students?
I would be curious to know, like, if that is, if that is the case. And then just...
We haven't been identified that way by the state, but we could be trending.
I would be, I would just be curious to see how that breaks down.
Just think that, let me know.
Yes, I'm sure that they would. Because I think at that point, we really have to take in, and I'm going to seize on every opportunity to kind of go back to that trauma and informed care and implicit bias journey because the impact of minority stress, just looking at the minority stress model, what that's going to do to testing and educational experience in itself and how we as a district couldn't better, if we have these schools identified and we're seeing that it is like a majority of minority students that are in, within needing these services, then we could better help and support, I guess, as a board. So we could target services better, like help, I guess.
Okay, well, thank you so much for your attention today. You've had a lot to listen to, so I appreciate it.
That was a lot of information. Thank you. Thank you. It was good information. I didn't mean it to sound so kind of negative when it came out.
Pete, you're up with the Quality of Life.
Yes, so we've been working with Mr. Horton from the Quality of Life and trying to see how we can support our students from the newcomer academy, both at Erie High and at East Middle School. So we have the newcomer academy there. So students who come from other countries come in, may not know English, may have a different nationality and language, and we find that that's a barrier. So we have a barrier for the language for the teachers because they are, they don't have the language. The students don't have that language. They have their language and the families. So the parents, there's a lot of communication issues. So we've, we're going to pilot this program. It's at East Middle School. There's an agreement in the board minutes for you. The four, we sat down as a group, we've been sitting down, talking with Sherri Prater, Chandra Slocum, who is our alternative programming person, Linda Capabianca, who's in charge of the EL program, as well as Mr. Horton and a few of the folks from Quality of Life. And we looked at how many students at East, we just did East for this remainder of the school year. How many students and what languages are the prevalent languages at East? So there's an Iraqi group, a Somali group, a Nepali, and then a Swahili group. So we saw the most of the students that are there that have come to the newcomers, those are the areas that we have need for. So we've been working on from after you would approve it on next week, the following week, to have four people coming in with those languages to be the bridge. So they would be working with the teachers. The teachers would be also giving them the assignments. The students then would have somebody to assist them, help them through the individual classrooms. But we also find that some of them have been here for a while but don't speak the language as fluently and need help in the regular ed classrooms. So they would be available to help interpret in the regular ed classrooms and then again at, with the families. We're finding that if there are things that need to be done, the interpretation will be there. There's another piece. There's a section of after-school programming that East has been doing. And some of the things they want to do is give kids an opportunity to see some of the careers that are out there. So what we would like to do is see, Sherri has a group that would be coming. If our students are from this group of students, then the interpreter would be available to be there at the after-school program. So we can adjust that person's schedule so that those kids can hear and understand what's happening. Some of the other things are the attendance. When there's an attendance issue, you go in front of the judge. The family doesn't understand. They don't know what the attendance rules are or what it means to miss school. So our goal is to see how this works at East and then reevaluate it and then look to see if we can do it next year. And then if it's going well and this seems to work, we could then also add it to Erie High.
One of our underlying issues with that student population is we have a number of services that we can't offer them, but often we aren't connecting the families and the students with those services. I think the newcomer academy is a really good example of that. We have a lot of newcomers that come to our school and opt not to go to that newcomers academy. And we can't by law force them to do that. So having somebody there that is more than just an interpreter, but more of a liaison that knows these programs and services can talk with the families and maybe suggest these, and our hope is that we'll get them better connected to services and in the long run have better results with the program. And the other thing I want to also mention is that we are going to pay with this with Title III funding. Federal funding designed specifically for our ELL population. We do have money in that budget for this type of service. So our goal here is to pay for that, out of that through the end of the year instead of with our general fund monies to see how it works.
So can I ask, what are we paying for in the program? Are we paying for interpreters?
The Title III. A big chunk of that is the interpreters, but we weren't using all of it for that. So we designated a portion to try this service out as well.
Just why we're doing this because it was one of the recommendations that Wu Tu had made that he felt that we could get our ELL students to perform at a greater level. So, great job.
Thank you, Pete. Okay, next up is the 2020 and 21 calendar. Teresa Zavala.
At your place is the calendar for the 2020-2021 school year. If you recall, and for the newborn members, last year we moved the first day of school until after Labor Day. There were two reasons for that. The first was the construction we had going on. The second was to try and improve student attendance at the beginning of the year. I can't remember if we reported to this board or it was before, but we did not see an improvement in our attendance numbers for students. With that being said, Labor Day is late this year. So I'm going to highlight three dates and then if you have any questions, I will take them. First day for the teachers is August 25th. First day for the students, the following Monday, which is August 31st. And that will take our last day for students and teachers to June 9th, 2021. This calendar mirrors the calendar of two years ago.
Were we doing all the Mondays off? Like, were there just two months in a row again or?
Yeah, they do not fall that way this year, yes.
I was happy to see that you had your teachers' classes going back to it.
Yeah, it moved back to that, the Monday, Tuesday before because, if you recall, we took that Wednesday and we had to move it to Christmas this year because of the way Christmas fell. Christmas moves to a Friday now because of leap year, so we were able to move that back to that Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
I was happy to see that. I thought it was effective.
Yeah. That's good. That's good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. The facilities plan, Neil Brockman.
Okay, so at your seat, you're going to see one really big, big piece of paper that I'll reference and then there'll be another piece of paper. I'll start with the big sheet. So what you're looking at in front of you is a first draft of the Schedule IV Collegiate Academy and the renovations that are occurring there. There are essentially only going to be four construction projects that occur this summer. Collegiate Academy, the security vestibules, the demolition of Roosevelt. And then we do have some grant funds to create a gaming lab at Erie High School. And that needs to be spent down before the end of this year. So that will be the fourth project that we'll have going on. Collegiate Academy being the absolute largest one that we have, I at least wanted everybody to be aware as to the actual scope of this project. And when you look at the timeline, just so that you have an idea of when things will be happening there. It is in a very aggressive timeline. It's basically, once we hit that first full week in April, there is going to be some kind of activity at Collegiate until December. They, they're going to wind up taking both sides of the stadium where the teachers are parking now and unfortunately, the garden, and then on the other side where those two trees currently are. Those will, unfortunately, the trees are going to have to come down and that will be that first week in April. And so it will mobilize and it will be here very rapidly.
Neil, you were talking before about the lack of parking over there. Do we have any plans for where we're going to be parking, where parents are going to be dropping off?
So we're going to, we will constantly be talking with the construction workers. As of right now, I don't have the full plan for the roof. In the end, the promenade, because we can take those two areas off the stadium, I'm comfortable with the promenade and how that work will occur. The roof is what I, is the big question mark. I don't know if they're starting from the stadium side of the building and working up to 29th or the other way around. If I have my say, I would rather them start high to low and then work their way from the stadium to 29th Street because that would allow 29th Street to remain open for parking and for dropping off kids. I worry when we have children, faculty, visitors walking underneath the building and we've got giant cranes lifting things up onto the roof. So that's the Collegiate Academy project. The other thing that we're going to talk to you, Mr. Pluto and myself, is about Erie High School.
So I'm going to geek out a little, some numbers here for a little bit here, so I apologize. But we, I think we have a pretty nice opportunity here to possibly get most of the work done at Erie High that we envisioned in both Phase 1 and Phase 2 of our facilities plan. So if you recall, Phase 1 of our facilities plan is about $80 million total. That's what we have funding for right now. Erie High in that plan has about $28 million worth of project costs. So we did have a conference call with PDE about two weeks ago to talk about the potential for state funding for this project. And I just want to walk through the formula to try to give you an idea where, what type of funding may be available. So if you look at the top of this table, you can see we have several lines that run through the calculation. I just want to take you quickly down the column titled Current Project because this is the funding that we anticipate receiving, yes, with the one that's highlighted with the yellow. This is the funding we anticipate receiving if we move ahead with the project that is envisioned in Phase 1 of the facilities plan. So right now, the formula is written so that there's a reimbursement amount of $18,000 per either enrollment or capacity. It's the lesser of one of those numbers for all our high schools. So if you look at that, you can see between Collegiate and Erie High, we have a enrollment of 2,435 students. With that, that would drive out a gross reimbursement of about $44.4 million. But it gets reduced from there based on a couple factors. One is our market value aid ratio, which is a factor that takes into consideration our general poverty in the community. So with that, using that formula, they would reimburse that $44 million by about 80%. And then there's another factor, and this is really the wild card and something we're going to have to keep a close eye on over the next couple of months. And that's the legislative factor that needs to be set as part of the state's annual budget process. So we're not sure what that's going to look like. We're hoping that because this is the first year and there's a real emphasis on school construction, that they're going to fund it at 1.0, but it could be something less than that. So again, assuming that they do fund it at 1.0, you see that our project, the maximum reimbursement that the state will give us on a project for Erie High is $34.9 million. So there's another piece of this that says that the maximum is set at that $34.9 million, but they're not going to give us more than 65% of the structure costs. That's the actual construction costs such as the general contractor, the electrician, HVAC, and so on. So looking at that, you have to look at the smaller of those two numbers. And because the structure costs on our current project are $27.1 million, the reimbursement drops from $34.9 million down to $17.6, which is a positive. And if you look further down here, that gets paid over a 20-year period. So if you look at the bottom section, you see our total structure costs on that project are $27 million. The engineers, architects are currently estimating soft costs of 4.6. So the overall project is about $32 million. We subtract out the state reimbursement and that nets out the project at $14 million. Comparing that to what the money we have available right now for that project, that means that we are $13.8 million under budget. Does that all make sense? Okay, so my concern with that is that the state will reimburse us up, and again, this is assuming they fund it 100%, up to $34.9 million. We only get one shot at this per building every 20 years. So we'll be leaving money on the table if we use, take the smaller projects. So I backed into what type of project we could do if we were trying to maximize that state funding. So when you back into the formula to maximize the $34.9 million state funding, we would actually, between the structure costs and the soft costs, be looking at a project of about $63 million at Erie High. And if you see the little arrow I put there, the total cost of the Phase 1 and Phase 2 project costs for that building are $68 million. So we have a possibility here to get all of that work done. And as you can see, with the state reimbursement, net out to basically a break even. So our net out-of-pocket cost to the district would be very close to that $27.9 million. So again, number one, that's contingent on legislature funding it. Number two, and another item that we're still working through right now, if this becomes a possibility, we get that $34.9 million over a 20-year period. So we would likely have to issue another bond issue to pay for that in the interim to make sure that we have the project costs for the other projects. And what would basically happen then is the payment from PDE would pay for that bond issue and we would still net out.
That's where we have a finance day.
So we're, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We're going to continue to monitor this, work with the architects and PDE. They, PDE's been great to work with. We're kind of their guinea pig on this project, so they want to see it go well for us. We, at this point, are pushing back the Erie High project. We initially looked at doing that over, starting that over the summer. In order to allow time for us to possibly work through this State Plan Con process, we have that pushed back to starting in January. So the bid openings then would happen sometime in the fall. And again, that'll give us time to see what happens with the legislature, whether or not they fund it 100% and then from there make some decisions on what type of project we want. But my recommendation at this point is if they fund it at 1.0, we should maximize that project now and get all that work done.
And we'll know that answer within two or three months?
Yes, assuming they pass the budget by June 30th.
I said two or three, is that...
And could that be greater than 1.0?
No. They said anywhere from zero to one.
So Brian, is this under the Plan Con that you would talk about last meeting?
Yes, yeah. I don't think, and I refer to Plan Con, I don't think they're calling it that anymore, but it's the new school construction dollars formula that they're using.
And then any additional money for asbestos mitigation or is that all included in this or we don't qualify for that?
That's a separate program that we don't have a lot of information on. But we're going to continue to monitor that as well. And you have enough work at Erie to use that all up? So, I mean, already, it was going to be phased over a longer period of time and now we would address it all at once. Phase, the work that we were planning in Phase 1, the $27 million, would take care of two of the four wings. So this would take care of the rest of that. This would allow us to do something that hasn't been done since the building was created and fix the heating and ventilation system completely across the building and do the renovations throughout, replace all the windows and, you know, address some of the other areas like the gym area where, you know, we weren't sure we were going to have funding to do that. Are you trying to top Fairview here? Yes, absolutely.
Is it a pool adjustment? Is the pool addressed during the big plan?
I'm not sure what they're looking at on the pool.
That's an embarrassment, isn't it?
The, the original scope, I don't believe, touched the pool. But if things happen in the right direction, then it will get to a point where we can sit down with the architects and start making decisions on what we should add to get to that $63 million dollar goal.
Mr. President. So I don't know if it's appropriate to add it now, since we're on the facilities plan, if we have to wait for any other matter. So cut me off if I should wait until we get down there. But I was, on my, in my position or my capacity, that I work with the governor's office, we were made aware that they, in his budget, he's, he's proposing for a $1 billion expansion in the redevelopment assistance capital program, which does address the contaminants in schools, which would be like what you had just talked about.
Yeah.
Yes, and so what I would like to propose is that we, just like we had done with the charter school recommendations, propose a resolution that says we support the governor what he's putting out to get this expansion running, because I think that as a district, we, we know that we have some, some issues in there that we could really benefit from participating in this. So I don't know if I just sent that to you, if I sent it out to the board, I don't know the correct protocol, so that's why I'm the nice one, to tell me what to do.
Mr. Speaker, you want to react to that? Can you accommodate what he's interested in doing?
If he has a resolution.
I believe Mr. Titus has a, a resolution already drafted, provided to him. If the board would so desire, we could have that placed on the agenda for next week. If he gets it to Angelo or myself, we could make sure that happens.
Absolutely.
If the board so desires.
Anyone object? Do that.
I would do that for him.
Thanks for that, Neil. It's good news, keep us posted, right? The pilot program we're doing, Randy and maybe Mrs. Speaker?
So at everyone's seat, you should have three different spreadsheets, and I'm going to just kind of, that's a little bit more detail of what I'm going to be talking about over the next couple of minutes. So at the last committee of the whole meeting, we had shared some information about the pilots. So this is the result of our annual review of pilots that were, that we just currently completed. I just wanted to give an update to everyone. About, I think it was about two years ago, 2018, we entered into an agreement with HANZ, and we create, what would happen is we found that they could receive a federal subsidy on their taxes. So what we did, to allow them enough time to set that up and to make their adjustments in their budgets, we set up convertible pilots with HANZ over the last two years. The first batch of those, roughly 22 properties, or 22 different parcels, I should say, those have now reached the point where they've matured, and we're going to convert those old properties over to be fully taxable. The result, net result of that is, that's about $69,000 in tax revenue that we'll be seeing. We've been getting 50% of that over the last two years, so an additional $34,000 per year. We also have some normal pilots, what I'll call normal pilots, with a number of different organizations that have been around for probably decades in most cases. So what we did is, the ones that were expiring this year, I reached out to them to require a little bit, asked for a little bit more information on if they still qualify for a pilot. We'd made the determination when we got information back from St. Mary's, the Alconon Club, and Sarah Reid Retirement Center, that they would still qualify for a pilot agreement. So we plan on continuing renewing those pilot agreements. Right now, we're bringing in about, at current property values and taxes, we're at about $188,000 in annual pilot revenue just from those three right there.
I've got a question on that. We have on St. Mary's home, we've got an assessment of 13. The much smaller facility down on the lake that we're, on the bay that we're in an issue with is assessed for a higher amount. If we agree to a pilot, does that foreclose us challenging their assessment? I think their assessment is too low at St. Mary's, and that we ought to be looking at all the senior living facilities so that they would be paying their fair share in the community.
The pilot agreement, just so everyone's aware, the pilot agreements that we entered into have evergreen clauses in them, so if we take no action, they will renew automatically. It's only, you only have to take affirmative action to cancel them. So at this point, the recommendation is to take no action on St. Mary's. It doesn't change the status quo in any way. The taxing bodies retain the right to appeal the assessed values of any of the properties included, and the property owner retains the right to appeal the value as well.
So it won't violate them if we decide to appeal at some point?
That's correct. All we're doing with the pilot agreements is establishing that there's a question regarding the taxability that is being resolved by them paying half.
There are then three other properties, Villa Maria Housing, one and two, as sometimes they're referred to. Those are actually HANZ properties, and also St. John's Evangelical Church or Lutheran St. John's is in the process of leasing out or forming an agreement with LECOM. Because of that, we are not going to renew their agreement. They would then probably fall under the LECOM agreement later this year. The Villa was our, the Villa properties, it was originally our intention to cancel those pilot agreements. However, some information was just given to me shortly before our meeting this afternoon, or this evening, and we'll have an official recommendation in the next couple of days. They're supposed to provide some additional information to us about the current status of those properties. Right now, if we cancel those, that would be about an additional $79,000 in, in annual tax revenue. And from here, what we would do is, next year about this time, there's a second installment of HANZ properties that will convert to be fully taxable, and then there's some also remaining pilots that we would review at that point. Among those are Hammett St. Vincent, Church of the Covenant are just a few of the other ones that we would review next year at this point.
What is the basis of taxability for the Church of the Covenant? The preschool they have there, or?
Mr. Nichols, that's a pilot that isn't due to be reviewed until next year, so we have not reviewed it.
Anything on the agenda that anyone has a question or concern about, maybe the next week's draft meeting agenda?
Mr. President, if I could just add one more thing to Randy's presentation with respect to the agenda. If the board is agreeable, then we would like to place a resolution canceling the pilots as indicated, with the possible exceptions of the Villa properties, as we're waiting for that additional information from HANZ to review that. If that is okay, we can add that to the agenda.
Any injections? I see two references to policies that was on the policy of the committee meeting, or?
Both of those policies were prepared by Attorney Cornell. Each of those policies have legal changes in them for which we really have no discretion.
Okay.
And so these are updates in order to ensure compliance we stay on.
Okay. Anyone else? Anything on the agenda? Okay, is there any other matter which any board member wants to bring up? A question or a comment on? If not, we'll go to executive session in five minutes if you can. Oh, did you have something?
No.
Okay. Well, let's take the five-minute break, try to, you can post for a minute, resume in the other room.